This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Uh, this is the city council ordinance meeting and I'm, um, it's Tuesday, January 23rd, uh, 6:00 PM and it is 6:02 PM and we're going to, um, call this meeting to, uh, order. Um, this is our first meeting for the, um, term and I'm councillor Connie Denham. Uh, councillor, um, Derby is also on this, uh, committee. Uh, councillor Smith is also on this, uh, committee and President Gomez is also, um, on the, on the committee. So, um, uh, we're just gonna start with the, well, on the agenda is the approval of minutes from past meetings, but, uh, since this is our first meeting, all previous, uh, minutes have been approved. Um, there's nobody on the meeting for public speak, uh, with a whole new business. And so we're going to continue, um, with business, which is the review of the LED sign and electronic message center sign ordinance. Um, I am going to turn it over to councillor Derby, uh, because councillor Smith and myself are new to this committee. Um, I've asked him to, uh, give an update, uh, but also just an overview of kind of the history of this and progress that has been made so that we're just up to speed on, on that. And President Gomez, feel free to chime in if you have thoughts as well.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we decided to undertake a review of electronic messaging center sign section of the ordinance for a couple of different reasons. First, um, I discovered, as I was driving home one day, that our new Mountain View School had installed an electronic messaging center. And as someone who had been on ordinance for years and helped write the sign ordinance, realized that that was against our zoning. Um, so in order to remedy that situation, we, uh, decided to not just look at the electronic messaging center, but also look at, uh, municipal exemption because the fire department had requested that we, um, look at this because they had a $60,000 grant to, $50,000 or $60,000 grant to put in one for a public information. Um, so we, we did do the municipal exemption and that went through fine. And so now we're in compliance with ourselves. Uh, but we also wanted to take a look. So the history of this is when we looked at electronic messaging centers, you know, years back, it was kind of the emergence of these things. So the places that had these were places like Las Vegas, right? Places that were maybe more, um, flashy, maybe, um, were advertising things that, you know, weren't necessarily helpful and, and were changing the character of, or the perceived character of the, the areas. Um, so the zoning that we instituted at the time ended up being very restrictive. Um, and the restriction for electronic messaging centers was basically was only in the mixed use industrial. So the mill, the mills, and you had to have 100,000 square feet of space to have one. Um, which is a lot.
That makes it obsolete.
It makes it basically impossible.
Right.
Um, and so when we were looking at this, we said, hey, the, the world has come forward to a place where these things are relatively commonplace. We know that they're not turning us into Tron. And, you know, we are still able to keep the character of our community, even if there is a sign here or there that is able to project a message without having someone to go out and, and put those little plastic letters on, right?
Right.
Um, which, you know, to some people are just as objectionable as having, you know, a lit sign. Um, so what we decided to do was to go into the zoning, take a look at what we had and say, in 2020. Um, and I believe I sent everybody here a copy of the draft that we're working on. There are still a couple of, um, items in here that decided that we would kind of take down the road because we knew that the composition of the committee was gonna be changed. Now, we do have a joint public hearing with the planning board scheduled, or hopefully it may be scheduled.
Yeah, so we're trying to schedule that and that was gonna, uh, be February 27th. So I have given them our available time and I'm just waiting to hear back from them to, to get that confirmed. So they might be confirming that this evening.
Perfect. So, and because that's the next step. So we looked at some of these changes, um, and really the, the idea here was to say, okay, how can, how can we bring this up to date? How can we still protect the idea of, you know, having our, um, character stay intact and, and still allow for these? Uh, so, you know, we, we did come up with some, some amendments that are proposed. Now, these are proposed amendments that we, and the way it works with the planning board is we can say, hey, this is what we put forward, what do you guys think? And we can get feedback, we can modify it. This is not set in stone. This is something that can be, you know, if, if it seems objectionable to people on the committee, if it seems objectionable to the planning board, there's modifications that can be made during this process. Um, so for example, if, if you look at, um, some of the changes, and I'll just highlight these, um, we added downtown and highway business districts to the allowable catch bases.
So I just have a clarifying question.
Yeah.
So this is a board or a message center that, let's say there's a hamburger restaurant and they're hiring, or they've got a sale on hamburgers, two for one, or whatever. And so that's, we're talking about that, or car wash, or any other.
And then, and then if you, if you have driven by a Mountain View School, like that is one of the newer versions of these. So, um, you know, there are regulations that we kept in here that are in line with the US Department of Transportation as far as like scrolling images are not allowed, um, flashing images, um, the text has to be of a certain size, the lumens have to be of a certain lumen. Um, they have to be, they have to be like dimmable at night, they have to be off certain hours. So all that stuff is staying.
Okay.
Um, so we did say, um, that we were, one of the things we wanted to strike from this was, um, non-message and background lights shall be off, message lights shall be one color. And really, at this point, at this stage of the game, most of these are color.
Yeah.
And if you, if you're driving on the highway and now, you're gonna see billboards that are not black and white or one color. You're gonna see billboards that look like a regular billboard, but they're digital. And so we felt like that piece of saying you can't have any background lights, you can't have any different colors, we found that to be a little outdated. So that was something we thought we would want to strike.
Technology.
Yeah, so, cause you know, to catch up with the, you know, where we are now. Um, one of the most important things that, at least from my perspective, that, um, and this was, uh, something that I proposed and, and the committee felt really comfortable with, was, um, adding a section called Public Service Announcements. So owners of electronic messaging centers, um, signs are required to coordinate with local authorities to display when appropriate, community, uh, announcements, emergency information important to traveling public, including Amber Alerts, Civil Alerts, weather, or other emergency information. So what we thought would make sense, um, these are expensive signs. So it's not like every McDonald's is gonna have one of these. And in fact, I don't think they have these anywhere, as to my knowledge. Um, but the church is interested in getting one of these.
What about what is currently at Mountain View School?
Uh, that's exempt.
But that technology is exempt because of where it's at or because it's?
Because it's on municipal property, it's exempt from any of the sections of the sign ordinance.
But in terms of thinking of the sign that you're describing, would that be a good comparison?
Yeah, yeah, I would say it would be a good comparison. Probably most would be smaller.
Okay.
Um, you know, but, so the one on, um, the church on Main Street is looking to potentially do one of these. Um, so that they have a sign already and it kind of announces when the service is on. And, you know, we thought like, hey, that is a pretty strategic location.
Yeah.
Right? There's another one on the East Hampton Savings Bank property, which is owned by the Lions Club. Another strategic area. So we felt that in case of emergency, now we can't, I don't think we can necessarily require them through zoning to say, so you're gonna display whatever message we tell you to display. But I think, you know, part of this is we haven't decided how, like, whether this is gonna be by right, whether it's gonna be by special permit, whether it's gonna be, you know, site plan approval. We haven't decided that yet.
Right.
So we could say as part of this is like, hey, would you be willing in times of an emergency to be, to display? And so we thought it was important to, to put this in. Um, so it was on people's radar. So for example, if the mountain road's closed, the church doesn't have any services going on, and they don't have any important messages, they can say for a few hours that mountain road is closed. Right? Like, that could be a really helpful thing for us. Um, so that was one of the things I thought was really important. Um, what, one of the things that we had agreed, um, as a, a strike was in mill use, uh, mill industrial districts and EMC sign is only permitted on properties with 100,000 square feet or more for, we thought that that would be, is, that would be just in that, that zoning area. It wouldn't apply to downtown business or, um, or, um, highway business. So we're like, that's a huge, uh, requirement that's not required, wouldn't be required in other places. So let's get that out. So we had suggested that we strike that. And really, that's, those are the, those are the changes that we have kind of brought forward so far.
So kind of ask a couple of questions. Uh, is, is there no limitation on size?
So the limitation on size is dictated by the, um, the zone. So there is a limitation on size, cause this, one of the, one of the things is this is it has to conform to the other parts of zone.
Okay.
So it's not like you could put up a, you know, a 50 by 25 sign, um, if you weren't allowed to do that already. So you can only put up a sign that's the size that is allowed within your, you know, what's already allowed.
Just wanna make sure.
Yep.
So the irony is that when I was on ordinance, I was part of this signage. This is really full circle.
Welcome back.
Yeah, but to put that in perspective, it has been a decade. And when we first came up with this, um, the concern was really, this was the first time we were seeing LED lights on cars coming. And it was at a historical point where people were really like, anything coming at them was really, really bright. And especially, we had so many conversations about the lumens and what is, what's one lumen versus a thousand lumens. I was really worried we were gonna be more in the weeds about that versus these changes.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, I just thought that was really funny. And I just wanted to add that history, that it really was at a time where the same signage, yeah, at that point, if we put it today, we wouldn't even blink at, but it really was just new.
Yep, it was very new.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not, it's not a ton of, I, I wouldn't call this like a ton of change. But it does, the impact allows for the church to put one there. Um, if there's a business that has the, the capital to do this, then they could replace one of those signs that you have to go, use the changeable words, right? So that could be like, um, it was Sider House Media. And they, and they still have the sign there. So like a sign could go there where they wouldn't have to climb up it, you know?
I guess the one, the one thing that makes me worried about having public messaging on a sign that's not controlled by the city is the trustability of that message. So I'd recommend that anytime we have a public service announcement that is going out and, um, that it says on the city website that we've asked these businesses that if possible to also run this message. So, you know, for the person that doesn't know whether to, trust that.
So then the question is, is who's gonna be responsible for that?
Well, I think that would be, so, um, it would come out of the mayor's office. It would come out of the emergency management. Um, so that's generally the mayor, it's gonna be the chief of police, the, the fire chief.
Okay.
And they're gonna be, so in, in any sort of emergency, they're generally gonna put together a, they come together and talk. And so if that happens, they would put out some sort of, um, you know, a mini press release. And they, hopefully, if, if this was, if we had some of these in town, it would be pretty easy. They could just send an email to the person who's in charge of the, the sign and say, can you please display this message for us for the next six hours? You know, I think, so, I mean, there is a little bit of logistics, but I think those logistics get taken care of on the executive end. What we just wanna make sure of is that we have the capability and that it's a known quantity that we might ask private sign owners to display a public message. So like the details of that, we don't really need to worry about. We just need to, like, within the zoning, we just need to make sure that we make it explicit what we think should be expected. That would, the, the details of it would fall to the executive branch. That would be the execution.
Have we had a conversation with them yet about that?
No, not, no, cause we're still in the formative stages. But, you know, I think, uh, you know, something like this would be really well received by, I'd like by the police chief and the fire chief, I think would be, um, because it means dissemination of information more quickly is always good in emergency management setting.
Other questions? Um, so as a point of process, do we need to vote on this and approve this tonight for it to go to? Or this is just what we're taking?
So this has already been voted, so this has been voted on.
Okay.
And it's been voted to come back to this committee and to go to the planning board. So when we're in situations where we're changing and zoning, so that requires a little bit of a different process than just a regular ordinance. So, um, and it requires more advertising, Jeff takes care of the advertising. Um, but, you know, we look at the item within committee when it was first introduced to us. We say, do we think this is valid to move forward or do we dismiss it? Um, so we found that it was valid to move forward. In that case, um, at, uh, what was it, three city council meetings ago, we moved this to ordinance, back to ordinance.
Okay.
And to the planning board. So then that triggers the clock for a joint public meeting.
Okay.
And then that piece can happen over one meeting, it can happen over a couple of meetings. Something like the cannabis stuff took multiple meetings. Um, and then they give us a recommendation. We create a recommendation to the full council and then we have a, a public hearing at the full council.
Right.
And then the committee from the planning board have to be, um, in the form of a letter.
In the form of a letter.
They have to give us, they have to give us something.
Yeah, and they have, uh, 30 days, I believe it's 30 days to do that. So there's like all these, there's, and we can, um, we could probably get Barbara to give you the timeline, but there's, so in zoning, there's certain, um, time triggers. So when it comes to the, to city council, then a clock starts. And then once we send it to the planning board, another clock starts. And so we have to do all these things within certain timeframes. Jeff's usually on top of it, so.
Yeah, I remember voting on this, but then when you said you had an update, I thought there was something new now that we.
No, I just wanted to update new members.
All right, okay, great.
Yeah, so this is, this is exactly what we sent back to council, that's exactly what we sent to planning board. Um, and so, you know, from our perspective, we can take a look at this and say, hey, we can make any changes we want to this. Uh, and then when we go to the planning board for the joint public hearing, we can say, hey, we, you know, since the, since the copy that you got, we've made these changes.
Okay.
You know, what do you all think? And they'll have input. And then we, it's like a conference committee.
Okay.
So where we can kind of take their suggestions, take our suggestions, mix them together, see if we can find something that we like, and if not, then we don't recommend it, uh, to the full council.
Right.
You know?
Are there any, is there anything that we wanna change or are we good with this? Are we, you spent the most time with this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with it.
I mean, we're seeing this for the first time, so I mean, I feel confident, right? Like, I feel good about this, the work that the council or committee members put into it, so.
I think one of the only things that we probably wanna like kick around a little bit is, you know, do, do we think that this is something that would be by right? So they would just have to pull a, a building permit? Is this something that we think that would be, um, site plan approval? Where they would, it's like the threshold is a little bit more, or a special permit where the threshold is to get this approved is significantly more than, than by right? Um, now, I think, I don't necessarily, I'm not like a super firm believer in. I also think that it's important for us to know what's going in places. So, um, you know, I, like, I'm kind of in the by right or site plan approval. I don't think necessarily special permit is, is, should be triggered in this situation, you know? But that's something that we can all kind of talk about.
So without a special permit, let's imagine that a business wants to have like a temporary sign and one of us goes by it and says, this is far too bright and far too big for what we intended. Um, who, where would the decision or the power rest at that point to tell that business, this is too bright? Or are we saying that if we don't have a special permit, that we wouldn't?
So the brightness would be controlled by, um, so the brightness, signs brightness must have the ability to respond to changes in ambient light levels. Signs will be equipped with brightness dimming controls. Brightness levels must be no more than federal highway standards. So if we felt that it was too bright, it probably would exceed the federal highway standards, which are. And if, and, and if we felt it was too bright, but it was within the federal highway standards, we, we probably might need to say, okay, well, am I necessarily an expert on this? Like, this is what the federal, like, the federal highway administration. So, um, I guess the, the short answer is we could always say to the person, hey, that seems really bright. It seems like it might be a little distracting, can you dim it a little bit? And they might, they have to have the controls to dim it. So that would be a request. And then if we felt like it was like really excessive and we thought it was above the federal highway, um, you know, limits then, or standards, then we could, um, check it. So you'd have like a, a lumen checker to see if, you know, there's like a light measuring instrument.
So let's, the, the other scenario that I could imagine, since we're talking about grading new places in downtown that would allow this. Let's suppose like right now, businesses in Cottage Street don't have that kind of signage. This is completely theoretical and I'm making this up, I have not heard this or anything. But let's suppose one of the businesses also had an apartment over them and decided that they were going to good put a big electric sign in the, you know, on, right in between those two to list their specials or, or anything else. So at this point, because this is a very small narrow spot in town, I can imagine a lot more people having something to say about a really bright interfering sign in this section. So just for clarity's sake, if that did happen and we had allowed for this sign, what would be the recourse that someone who didn't like this sign would have? Are we saying there would be no recourse?
Well, either way, so here's the thing, so when it comes to zoning, um, if they're able to put a sign in that spot that you're imagining, they can, they can put a sign there now.
Right.
And they could put a lit sign there now. And they could put a lit sign there now that does not conform to any sort of standards because the zoning allows it.
Oh, okay, I was, I was reading that different.
Yeah, so, so this wouldn't allow for anything that's not already allowed. It just is the, the, what is contained within that sign would be changeable, right? So like, let's just say that your imaginary store that wanted to put a sign up, well, they could put a sign there now.
Okay.
And they could, they could have a lit sign there now. Um, and that lit sign would not have to conform to any sort of lumen standard. Right, but the message wouldn't be changeable.
Okay.
So, um, but I also.
Daily specials.
Like, it wouldn't, and, and honestly, like, if you look at the configuration of Cottage Street, like, that type of sign would, like, the only place it could potentially really make sense just because of the narrowness of the space, like, if you're going down, you'd have to really crane your neck to see. You wouldn't, you basically wouldn't be able to see it if you're in your car, right? So that's what probably most people, so the only thing I can imagine is if they made some modifications to the awning of the maribou. Right? So that would be, cause that used to be a movie.
A movie theater.
Right, so there could be, but it's really nice and I, I don't think that there's anybody looking to do that. But that's really the only kind of place I can imagine on Cottage Street that that kind of, so. So generally, these signs are gonna be freestanding signs. So they're gonna be ones like the Lions Club one on East Hampton, like maybe the McDonald's. Well, I don't know if you all remember when McDonald's used to have like a giant rolling sign that had like a, it was like old carnival sign with an arrow, you know? And it was like really kind of funny looking and it had like, you know, you could go out and put the letters on it. Um, generally, it's gonna be that type of sign. It's not, they're not gonna do banner signs usually, cause like, the, um, there is one in our area that is a banner sign that would be similar to this. And it did get a lot of flack, which was the Academy of Music.
Okay.
So, but then again, if you think about that space, the, the road is so wide, it really does, you, you are able to see what's going on there when you're driving by. And like, um, so it does, it does make sense there. Um, I, I would say another one is if you ever, like, so where I teach at North Hampton High School, there's one of these signs right in front of the school. And so right now it says Friday is, there's no school, cause it's teacher work. Um, so, you know, that's more typically the, the style of, of sign that's, that we're probably gonna be seeing. Um, again, these are relatively expensive, so I don't know how many businesses are gonna adopt them if they haven't already, or if they haven't tried already, like no gas stations have adopted these. But I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted more, yeah, just needed to imagine it better.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, that's one of the things that, like, with this, the zoning is, it does, like, sometimes you need to kind of visualize what that, how this is gonna play out.
Yeah.
And, and it's important for us to visualize that, right? Because we don't wanna turn this into like, um, you know, a, uh, a lit up strip.
The Riverdale Street of East Hampton.
But at the end of the day, you know, people can already put up signs that are lit. They can already put up signs that, that are, you know, dictated size by where they are and what, what the type is. And, uh, you know, this would basically just give another option for people that wanted to, you know, put a sign out. And general, like, generally, these are freestanding signs.
Um, so it's a follow-up question to your question about thinking about, um, if there's a, a permit for this. Is that, is that something that we need to include in this?
No.
Or that's another step?
We can discuss, we can discuss that with the planning board and a lot, and so, and the reason why that's a good thing to discuss with the planning board, I mean, I think it's, it's worth us talking about, thinking about it. Um, but the planning board's the one that issues those permits.
Right.
So they're, they're the, so if it's, if it's by right, they don't, they don't, it's just a building permit. Like you just would, if you're, just like you're doing any sign, you just go to the building department, pull a permit. Um, if it's, if it's like an approval, then that does go to the planning board. If it's special permit, that does go to the planning board with extra advertising requirements, neighbor notification, things, et cetera. Um, so it's a little bit more of a rigorous process, which might, and I think this is where we asked the planning board, do, do we think that that's too rigorous? Because it can be, I mean, generally, we're talking about special permit, we're talking about like, you know, big projects. Generally, there's special permits, you know? So, but I, I do think that that's one of the things that we wanna make sure that we get their input on. Um, because they're the ones that are gonna be dealing with it.
And I know you're saying you're not, you're in the middle.
I'm kind of in the middle.
Do you have thoughts about this or?
Which part of it?
The, um, permitted by right, or if it's something that they have to get a special permit for, or?
So, on the one hand, I know this seems kind of trivial, but I have to say that I've always noticed the signage in East Hampton as a result of working on this. You can't unsee it once you're there. So I think, I don't know, the, the special permit, it seems a little unnecessary. Like, it seems like a little, like, making work where we don't need to be making work for process. However, I would be willing to look at it again if at a future date, without having that kind of special pyramid, it was like, wow, we didn't visualize this message. Turns out we really should have, so.
That's where I'm kind of feeling right now, because I think it's not uncommon to be like, oh, we're just talking and then we get. and then we get, you know, some massive something or other, and then we're like, that's not what we intended at all, right?
The ir- the irony here is, is that, um, in East Hampton, we do have a sign ordinance, it's very, it's very specific, it's very clear, and, uh, not very many people abide by it. Like, for example, flag signs.
Not allowed.
Those, uh, inflatable, like, old things.
Not allowed.
Um, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's not allowed, that's
Happening.
Happening right now. Um, that's, that's, no, that's a conversation for a different day, I mean, we do, you know, I would say, like, one of the things that was kind of, it was on my, on my docket was a, a look at the sign ordinance, our sign or ordinance as it currently stands um, is borderline unconstitutional. So, huh, you know, we do have some, we, we do have some stuff to look at as it relates to our sign ordinance. Um, it's a, as the, as someone who went through it, it took us two terms to get the first sign ordinance done, and it was it was really tough, so, I mean, the idea of, that's probably why I didn't bring it forward, because the thought of that, of doing that, that process again was, I mean, I think we could probably make it simpler. Um, you know, it's really like to, any content-based regulations cannot have. Um, so it would be all size and type, you know, time, place, manner, right? Um, so, that, that being said, you know, I think, I think this is, this is a good one for us to bring to, um, to the, uh, planning board and say, hey, what do you guys think about this? They'll have, uh, they'll have a special uh, perspective as they deal with special permits and site plan approval. And they'll be like, do we wanna see these? You know, and we, and I think if we kind of have our thoughts going into, and, and at the end of the day, once we hear what they have to say, if we find that what an application is not working, and we need to tighten things up, we can always go back to it. And then that, that is a hundred percent within our purview. Um, I think, just to, to back up really quick, I think one of the only other things we, we talked about was the, the times that the signs were allowed to be on. So we said, uh, shall not be illuminated between the hours of eleven P M and seven A M.
What if there's an emergency message?
I thi- I think that that would be potentially an exception to that.
Okay.
Um, and, or, and then it says, or no later than operating business hours at beyond eleven. So if, if your business is open past eleven, then you can keep your sign on while you're open. But once you close, the, the time would have to turn off. Um, and, and that's just like, you know, in areas where you might have, um, a cohabitation of residential and commercial, to be respectful.
And do we need to put in here then, if, if there's an emergency, do we have to have a special note of like, exception in case of an emergency?
I, I think that would be a really easy, um, like, couple word thing, if we need to say, you know, uh, with the exception of an emergency situation.
Anything else we want to bring to the planning board for question?
Well, and, I mean, we can also, um, sit with this, so you guys can have, take time to review it. See where it fits in with the overall, like, section that it's in, in the ordinance, and, and see if anything else comes out. Um, because wh- when we are with the planning board, it's, it's an open dialogue. So they can ask us questions, we can ask them questions, we can kind of, um, you know, banter and, and, you know, figure out how to solve the problems, if there are.
Other thoughts, President Bama? Uh, Councilor Kuzinski, I see you're on, do, do you have thoughts, is there anything you'd like to add to this conversation?
I think you're covering the subject quite well, uh, and yes, uh, I remember Tamara being there with Salem discussing electronic message boards a while ago, uh, and, and there's a lot of thought that's gone into it, I, I, I'm, I'm a little bit wondering how this might play out in, let's say, an historic district, if we were to, or how it plays out in other communities uh, in historic districts, over time, whether it, I mean, just what does it do, uh, in the National Historic Register, the, the state historic, and any associations that are concerned with how this plays out with historic areas. So that, I, I think we need to be careful that we, it's, it's part of the protecting the character to, to examine those areas. Uh, that being said, uh, I, I know that we talk a lot about D O T, I mean, uh, federal highway standards. But I, I think the federal highway standards for signs are specific to like the interstates, the signs on the interstate, so I'm not sure that all the regulations that are federal regulations really apply to downtown districts, in, in our own highway district, that would be closer to what goes on in a, in, in a, an interstate highway situation. But really, the federal government's only, I think, dealing with, you know, how, guys are going sixty-five, seventy miles an hour barreling down a highway, how do the signs work? So I just wanted to throw those, those thoughts out, that's what, that's what's bouncing around inside of my head here, and, uh, I think you're doing great, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Kuzinski, so, are, I, I'm assuming we're allowed to use the standards recommended by the Department of Transportation, and so, yeah.
Um, and, and I believe, you know, this is something that we could, uh, do Greg Nellman into, but I believe the manual and uniform traffic control devices for streets and highways. So that would be where these standards would be, and, and they have standards that apply to, you know, side streets, to main roads, to highways, to, you know, freeways. Um, so, I, I think that, I think that we can look into this more, I mean, we have time, so, um, but I, I believe that we should be, um, we should be able to make sure that these are applicable to the zones that we are thinking about letting them enter into. Now, as it, as it relates to historic districts, I don't believe we have any designated historic districts, I believe we have a couple of historic buildings. But I don't believe that we have any historic districts, so, um, that, that's something that I, I think is worth saying, like, what would, how would, how would this play out on an historic building, which I believe the historic, uh, building regulations are very strict as it relates to any sort of modifications. So if you were talking about attaching one of these to a historic building, like, that would have to go through a pretty rigorous process, I don't think that would happen. Um, i- if it was, you know, if there was one adjacent to a historic building, I don't know that there, it would, there would be any applicability, um, as far as historic standards go, but it's a good point.
So I, I can reach out to Greg, um, about, um, about, um, the Department of Transportation standards, so I can reach out to him, and also I'll reach out about historic buildings as well, so I can find that out. And provide that information when we meet with, uh, well, one, I can email you all, um, uh, well, no, I can't email you all. Um, I will, I guess when we meet with the planning board, I can bring that up.
Yep, well, if you have any informational stuff you can email, we just can't discuss it.
Right.
Right, so if it's for information only.
Right.
Then that way we can, we can review the stuff.
Right.
And we can at least be aware of it as we move into the next week.
Right, but not discuss it.
Not discuss it.
And that include, if you send some information, then if someone wanna add something and then share that has no allowance, just, just to read it.
Just to read it.
Right. For reading only?
That's why I put for informational purposes.
For reading questions.
Any other thoughts?
Um, just in my notes, you said, um, you're gonna be reaching out to Greg regarding transportation standards and what else?
The historic building.
Oh, historic building, okay, sorry. Hadn't written that all down.
Now I'm, now I'm gonna go down this rabbit hole of looking at these highway standards.
This, this is really like a deja vu, it's very strange. If I had never left. But I mean, it's the, it's the, it's the exact same issue.
Awesome, uh, anything else we want to talk about regarding that?
I don't think so.
No?
So hopefully we'll find out, um, from the planning board about the twenty-seventh, uh, and then we can um, plan on meeting at that time.
It's in my calendar.
Awesome, all right, um, so that would be our next meeting, uh, I'm assuming. Um, unless something else comes up on my next, um, agendas, uh, uh, next, um, city council agenda, so um, I guess I will take a motion to, um, adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.